All right, I'll call the meeting to order of our study session for Wednesday, October 16th, and ask all of you to join me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We need a roll call of everyone or just the commission?
Just the commission.
Okay. Commissioner Rozell.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Jenks.
Present.
Commissioner Elder.
Present.
Commissioner Olson has had another commitment this evening is excused, and Mayor Paul is present. Approval of the agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
You mean second?
Support.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Public participation, anyone have any comments that are not an agenda item? I see none, public participation is closed, and we'll move on to the items of the agenda. Looking for last, last agenda, I did have it right here, where did we leave off?
We left off at the point we were going to talk about whether or not to contract with an outside organization to help with or to do research on the Act 345 millage proposal.
Okay. We finished the review on mixes of fixes for road maintenance strategy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so do you want to start by presenting the thoughts on the millage research contract?
Yep, they're entirely my thoughts, this is not anything that I ran past the Long Range Budget Committee, but it did occur to me when trying to develop a message, an explanation, because it is somewhat complicated, vote for pensions, get your roads fixed, and then there's also the question of where is that millage cap where the residents are comfortable with approving it for pensions that would be enough to cover the pensions but wouldn't be, you know, an over ask, and I thought it would be helpful or prudent or efficient to get help from an outside agency, a consulting firm, that could do two things, one is help us gauge the level of support for the different millage caps and then also create a messaging campaign for that, that millage or that proposal. So I did reach out to three different organizations, I have three different quotes, they have different levels of services that they could provide, which I can go over with you, not to be voted on tonight, but I'm more interested just in the concept of getting research done for this proposal, because the downside to that is if we, originally we're looking at putting that Act 345 millage on the March 2020 ballot, election needs to, I'm sorry, language needs to be to the county clerk by December, and that doesn't leave us enough time to do the research. So getting additional money for, I'm sorry, getting additional time for research means pushing back the election past March of 2020, as with everything in life, there's a trade So the three proposals, just to kind of give you a ballpark on costs, we have one firm that would just do a phone survey only, they would work with us on questions, and they would do a phone survey of residents, that quote was $7,500. We had a second proposal that included doing a focus group, an online survey, and helping us create the messaging, and that was $10,500. And then a third group would do both an online and a paper survey for $11,000, and if we wanted focus group, it was additional $6,000, and then they also had a metrics baseline report that they could prepare for us for $4,000, which doesn't impact the millage, it was just something that if we wanted to get a pulse of the residents on different items and then continue to survey them going forward, that was an option. So you're looking at 7,500, 10,500, and 12 and 6, about $18,000 for the third one. My preference actually is the middle one, I think we get the most bang for the buck for what they are offering in terms of services, and they seem, was an organization that seemed to understand what the deliverables were that I was looking for.
Mr. Mayor, if we decide to go the consultant route, it takes March off the table, if we then decided that we could get it on a May ballot, is it in time for the levy in July? Could we levy it and then on the July tax bill, if it's approved in May?
Yeah.
So we would pay the cost of the May election, which, you know, would be several thousand dollars, obviously, but the option then would be to wait till August, where it wouldn't cost anything, just go on the state primary, but then we miss the levy till the following year. So, you know, to me, the choice is really March or May. Do we go the consultant route and go to May, where we know turnout will be low, or do we not go the consultant route and push for March, there won't be really much of a cost to the city, because that's presidential primary, and we know turnout will be higher, based on what we're seeing. So, I mean, I think there's a lot of things to consider, you know, in terms of when do we want to make the ask, when are we going to engage the most residents, what are the costs of that, and then, you know, this consultant concept, are we comfortable, you know, spending money to do that, or is it sort of generally accepted that, you know, the residents in the city recognize the value that they get from public safety, and that, you know, would they vote against a public safety related millage? So I personally think probably not, but, you know, do we want to spend the money to find out?
Exactly.
Not only to find out, but then help us with the education.
Question, do we have an educational?
We are taping this, so if you-
Do we have an educational component for this plan? I mean, I think, I hear you saying you're going to think about going to a consultant to help us with the election, but what about preceding that? What about what we had talked about a little bit, the educational program and what we would do, maybe having, you know, talent, little town meetings and things like that? Who's going to take care of that before we would go outside and hire like a consultant to do something like this? So where is that going to happen, and you're pushing, you know, to March or May? So I'm just curious, kind of the timeframe, I think the education has to come before we even go to the phone survey, person might get a phone survey and then have no idea what you're talking about. I know there's been little mentions of it, and they know what the Long Range Planning Committee's been doing, but I think we have to have a strong educational component to help see success for this, just my thought.
Yeah, I would like to see this move in March rather than be delayed. I think you end up, if you do it in May, in a controversy with people, and I don't want a delay of getting this moving forward. March is, I think, a good time, the question becomes, can you get the language that you want that's clear, at least for the ballot, by the end of December? We have a number of other communities that have already done this, so I would think that at least we can look at that and sit down with a political consultant to say, does this sound clear? And then have the education developed, obviously, before March, but let people know in February what's going on, because it gets a little confusing about, didn't I just vote for something like this, or isn't it now over here, and showing the fact that we can free up 800,000 that goes into the, back into the general fund at a much lower cost. Really what we're doing is the way people buy a home, we're spreading it out for a longer period of time. But I would like to see us go with March. I would, I'd like to find someone that can help us market, because this has been done before, we can check with some of the other cities and see who are they pleased with, because by hindsight, we are much more accurate than by being in the before, and we might be able to get someone that has developed some of the literature. I think it was recommended to us that we go to the 2 to 2.7, and we can maybe, and maybe we can follow that, we explain the five mills is in case there is a recession, so we have funding in there. But there's, I assume there was some logic in the research that was done in those recommendations that came in the study.
That is something that the commission's going to have to take into consideration, this is October, the language for the proposal needs to be done in December, so that as a body, you would have to decide what that millage cap will be at your meeting in November, or if you do a special meeting between now and the August, December is the 14th?
Yeah, it's the 12th Tuesday before-
Okay.
-March 10th, so that's, could be right. I think you're right, I mean, the question is, you know, what's the cap going to be? That's the, that's the thing we need to decide before that December deadline, get the language certified, and then we can start with education and, you know, and even maybe start once we settle on the cap. Look, I'm going to tell you right now, five mills is too high, and I think three mills is comfortable. I mean, the actuary's going to come up with what our ARC payment is, and we're going to levy a millage to make the ARC payment, they think it's around 2 something. Look, if the economy gets bad, I'm not going to levy five mills on the residents to, to make the payment, we'll just pay what we can, we'll just pay what we can, we'll be capped, we'll levy three, you know, that's what a cap I'm comfortable with, and we'll have to make up for it elsewhere. I mean, if times get bad, I'm not going to, I'm not comfortable, you know, or, or if mortality tables change, investment rate of returns change, all these, all of these assumptions that the actuary makes when they come up with this annual required contribution, if that changes, and all of a sudden our contribution amount goes up, I'm not levying five mills, that is, that is way too high. So I'm comfortable with, you know, somewhere around three mills, and it'll probably, in likelihood, be less than that, but I think that's a, that's a reasonable ask.
I would agree with the three mil cap. The Huntington Woods has proved in the past through a pretty tough recession that we rebounded fairly quickly, so if there are a few years in there when we're not totally funding through that three mil cap, that's okay, we have to make adjustments. In tough times, we can't rely on the citizens to do that, so I think three mil is a reasonable cap.
And I would favor having the five mil cap available, but not levying it in the beginning. And the reason behind that is, when the property values go down, we have no choice, the, the rate at which you are, your property taxes go down, although the value of your home may recover, you have permanently lost what you used to have, and then the way we've been seeing in Washington for years, we have virtually zero inflation, it doesn't matter who is the president. So your ability to increase revenues stays constant, but at a lower level. So all we continually do, it's not in the recession, it's in the year after when the assessments come out that we get pushed down. So we would be at a lower level going into a recession. When you start coming out of the recession, at that point in time, you're never going to recover, there is no pop-up, your home recovers, but you're, but the taxable, the value on which we tax never catches up.
So I want to make sure I understand this, are you suggesting that not a three mil cap, but a five mil cap?
I'm suggesting, I liked what I saw in the report, where we even go with 2.7 as to what we would put on there now, and add a later point if necessary.
So five mils?
Five mils. We cannot-
It's not, it's not actually our decision on how much we levy, that is based on the number that the actuary figures out is, is the cost of-
And that, I think that's what I-
And they estimated 2.1.
2.1?
Yeah, 2.1 was what they felt as of right now is what the levy would be. It could go as, you know, around 2.7, I think-
That was the highest.
Was the high.
Yeah.
And that's why I thought, well, three would, you know, be reasonable.
This consulting group, the one with the focus group and the online survey, so, so that I'm clear, in order to make March happen, by using a consultant, it accelerates some of the things that we would have to do, and they are going to help with the campaign? Or what is their role in that?
They're, what I put forward in the IRP is that they would help us with the, determining what the millage cap would be, sounds like the commission's comfortable determining that themselves, and then creating messaging. That could wait and be, be done after December, I mean, they could do that November, December, January, right? Because then we would, we would have to do education in February.
Okay. And I'll tell you why I like the focus group and this ed, this online survey, because you're engaging with the community at that time as well, so even though it's not a campaign, the word is getting out and it is, you know, we're-
Exposure.
I think, looking at the numbers and the impact to the households, I mean, we're, I'm looking at this more holistically about all the increases, and we're talking pensions and bonds and milli, and then we talked about increases in cost of parks and rags just last night, but I think in looking at the chart, the three, I'm comfortable with the number three as well. But I like the idea of the flexibility of adjusting that if we are in a recession.
Well, so the millage, the cap, you have to have a cap, you can't say between three and five. You can say three, and then you can go back to the voters if things go south and you decide that you do need to levy five, or you say five, with the understanding that you don't anticipate to, anticipate loving five unless, you know, things go off the rails.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
But, but when you're marketing the language, if you have five mil as your cap, part of that education and marketing is going to be the potential impact of this is five mills, which would be about $1,200 on an average house, just picking that number off the line.
Yeah, right.
So that, that is a bigger sell.
I think five is difficult.
That was one of the reasons, one of the reasons why we were talking about doing this research upfront, was just to get an idea of what people are comfortable with.
Right.
My gut says five mil is too high.
Yeah.
Jeff's okay with it?
I don't like five mills, what I'm trying to say is the following, our revenue goes down because the value of all homes goes down in a subsequent to a recession. At that point in time, whatever your millage is, is set on a lower level, and that would be the only time I would consider going up to five. We have a higher millage, we have a higher authorization, well, we got pushed back, but we had a higher authorization, and we always said we will only go up by what, a half mil?
That was actually the agreement-
Yeah, but I mean-
-that we made when we passed that.
That's right, but I mean, we weren't maximizing it, but all of a sudden your money goes down, your tax bill does go down because the value of your home goes down. All I was saying is we will keep the tax, try and, in that kind of crisis, keep the tax bill roughly to the average person where it was before.
I completely understand what you're saying, I, I think what I have a problem with is looking a taxpayer in the eye and saying, sorry, you're unemployed, sorry you took a pay cut, but rather than you enjoying a lesser tax bill because the value of your home is plummeting, I'm going to stick it to you and make you pay the same. I'm not okay with that, I'm not okay with that. When the economy gets bad, people hurt, and people deserve to pay less, and so I'm not okay with saying, well, we're going to raise the mill rate so you pay the same.
And we, we also have a tax circuit breaker, where if you, and I've sort of been in a conversation with Tim, that we make that better known to people. If you are low income, you can end up paying a portion or 0% of your tax owed, it's a state law, it is not put against your property in the future, it's no type of lien. Tim, am I correct on that?
And what, and what is that poverty rate? Below the poverty rate? Right, I mean, we just do not have-
Well, it's 24,000 for one, it's 30, 28,000 for two, it's 32,000 for three, and it can be-
I've made my argument.
If I may, I appreciate both of your comments, and I understand both of your positions on this. As a part of a two-income household family with a child during a recession, I will tell you, if one of us loses our jobs, or if one of us has to take a pay cut, and I'm talking about the recession, because we all lived through it, a relief from tax bills is very much welcome, because childcare costs does not go away, childhood does not go away, and as a parent in this community, you just have to keep going. And that ability, you know, the savings and taxes, it, people expect it during a recession, and I just don't have the heart to look at seniors or families in the eye and say, you know what, during an up market, you were paying $6,000 in taxes, and now you've lost your job and your taxes are going to stay the same. It's just not right, that's typically not how the real estate market has worked, and that's just the expectations of people in those times are that my tax bills will decrease if there is a recession, so having, it's not certainty, but that is the way that it has worked for a long time, and I think people have that expectation, and if you do that to them in such a vulnerable time in their lives, it's just not right, in my opinion. And that, that's just how I would experience it as a household, as something that hangs over my own head. So I'm comfortable with three mils, I think it's, you know, based on what the committee has put a lot of thought in, as well as some of the minority, minority comments that we received, it's a lot for, for people, it really is, and we have to, in my opinion, be sensitive to that.
So, so the committee recommended five mil cap, did they have a long discussion about this? Is there anyone, anyone here that was?
First, in direct response to your question, I made a motion to keep it at three.
Yep.
The recommendation from Amy was five, the committee voted for it.
I didn't make a recommendation.
Well, somebody's recommendation. I have to say, I don't believe anybody on the committee besides myself read the MERS report. Three mills produces, right now, a million 175,000 dollars. What you are required to contribute right now is estimated 800,000, MERS estimates, I don't, their recommendations are frequently wrong, but they estimate it's going to go down. So it seems to me, three mills, which gives you a million 125, is more than sufficient to cover 800,000, and it also seems to me, if you put five mills out there, there will be people opposed to this who are going to say, hey, your taxes are going up five mills, that's like a 33% increase in your taxes, I think you are inviting disaster if you go with five mills.
Kim Bateman, I was the chair of the Revenue Subcommittee, and we did discuss this matter at great length, and we looked at many things, and as we just began to focus on 345, we looked at, could we solve problems long range? Because the charge you gave to us was to develop a long-range plan. So we recommended 25 years, take this, essentially take this portion of our obligation, something that recession, no matter what, we can't avoid, we owe this to the people who are retired, and that we would, for one time, ask the residents to take care of this problem completely. To take care of it completely, we figured that it would be wise to say, we simply don't know the future, and that giving the, we'll never get to five unless we need five to pay for that obligation, because it's, legislation provides that it's caps at the actual cost. So, we were quite comfortable with putting, we actually reduced it from our original consideration, which was six mil, but as, as we went through the full committee, it became five. So, yes, we thought about it, yes, we realize that there are situations where citizens, through ups and downs of, of the economy, this may be in effect, but we wanted to be honest, and we could not bring something to this commission, we could not bring something in front of the residents that we felt didn't solve the problem long-term, so that's what we proposed. If it's explained to the residents, what are we trying to do? What are we after? We have this obligation, and there could be a time where we would, to meet that obligation, we would be trimming other parts of, of the budget. And so we were quite comfortable with recommending at this amount. As a homeowner, I hope it never gets anywhere near five mills for this obligation, but at least we can say this problem would be behind us. Thank you.
When this came up for a vote, I was not in favor of five. I think that the idea of having five, because it gives you a lot of flexibility, is a very difficult thing to explain to the voters. And if I were, this is a preview of what I think would happen in a focus group, if I were in the focus group, I would just assume five, I would assume the worst case. The advantage of three, or even lower, is that it's a much easier thing to educate people about, because it's closer to what we believe we actually need. And, you know, if things go off the rails badly with the economy, I think we just have to deal with it at that time. I think it's just a very difficult sale to say, well, you know, the actuaries tell us two, 2.1. But we want to, you know, go all the way to five. You just look at it as a percentage increase over two. It's huge. That's more than a cushion, you know? If you say three, you say, well, the numbers could fluctuate. We might need a cushion. That, I think, is something that we could sell. I think five is hard to sell.
Thank you for those comments.
Mr. Mayor, if you want, if we're going to like take maybe any of this in little baby steps, do we want a motion to do a cap on 345 and kind of put that on the record and then decide like whether we're going to do the contract and then the millage vote? Or do we just want to do it all as one big thing at the end?
I think what I'll do, because you can't take any action tonight. And besides, I think you want Jules to be here. But what I can do is work with the attorney to draw up the language for three mills and then put that on the November ballot. So you can have that discussion in.
November agenda.
November, I'm sorry. Yeah, November agenda. And then you can decide at that time, you know, what you finally land on for a millage rate. But at least you can get that settled at the November meeting.
But I think we should listen very carefully to what Mr. Bateman said. We are limited on what that millage can be to the actual demand. I'm not sure what the wording was on it. But we're limited to the actual cost that we have for that year, which, as you indicated, was 2.1%.
This year, it fluctuates.
And it fluctuates. So, I mean, one of the things we have to make very, very clear, whatever number we select, that we are limited, this is what the actuaries say, it's at 2.1%. This was a recommendation that came from a third party, maybe the actuaries, that suggested that you be at this in case there were problems. But at no point can we use, can we go to any amount that we need because we have a shortfall. We still have to deal with what the cost is to deal with the pension retirement for that year.
All right, so is there consensus then to bring back on the November agenda, proposed language for a public act 345 millage? We'll insert the three-mill cap and then you will make a final decision at that November meeting?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right, then let's.
Let's go back to where we started to talk about research.
Right.
So on this one, I guess, before, before I want to spend, you know, tax money on this, I really want to understand, you know, it's about developing the message, right? They cannot campaign, obviously, that's illegal. We cannot use tax money to promote it, but we can provide unbiased, accurate education. So the middle consultant was proposing online survey and a paper survey for folks who didn't complete it online, is that what you said?
I had the online survey.
No, that.
It's just a digital survey using Survey Monkey.
It said Survey Monkey? So that was an online one?
The whole RFP was written to have someone do, get information to us before we wrote the language.
Right.
So that, if we're going to use a research company to help us with the messaging, this is actually a whole different RFP.
Right.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And so that's what I'm trying to get at, is that, you know, if this one included that, kind of, now it's.
We're assuming we know what the people want here.
Now, how can we communicate, well, you do this and it does A, B, and C. And the three is a maximum. It could be 2.1 for the next 15 years. You know, it could be 2.3, who knows? That's what you're, that's what we're kind of left with is.
It is going to fluctuate every year.
Right, right. And so, yeah, it may never be three. It may be three all the time, who knows? But, but I guess, you know what I'm saying? I mean, we don't know.
Yeah, this changes your RFP.
So I guess we would want something where, I believe, focus groups and then surveys of not what they feel the millage cap should be, but whether or not they're in support. You know, I mean, I would almost want a survey of where, if you were voting today, how do you feel about this? We see where the community stands. And then we build, we know what we're up against education-wise and how to build the messaging. You know, if, you know, they like the road component of it, they like the public safety component of it, then we know where to shift our educational focus. Is there value in it?
I don't even know that a survey is necessary. I think we need more help in the education.
Education.
Conducting the open houses and however we're going to go about this is more important than a survey to find out how people feel about this. Because we've already decided what we're going to throw out there.
If.
How do we best educate people so they fully understand it?
If you go back to a survey of how do people feel, we're going to get the discussion that we had tonight. 3%, 5%? It's a little bit confusing. How much do you want from me? What if I do get laid off? Do you have anything in there? One of the scariest things in a city like Huntington Woods is seniors and many people run out of money. And they will not tell their children. And they won't tell most other people. And instead of being able to eat, they have to pay taxes. And there is a circuit breaker in there. And I'd like to make more people aware of how that circuit breaker works. And I mean, I've done it with a couple of people already when Tony was here. And they have all got tax exemptions. And people or children don't even know what occurred.
So that's kind of a different discussion.
Can we get consensus on, we're moving forward with a March date?
Yes.
I think March is our best bet. It's extremely low cost and.
And we don't alienate tax?
And we get a high turnout.
We need to focus on the campaign then.
Call it messaging.
Education.
I'm sorry, education.
I don't say campaign as a negative connotation when you.
Sorry.
I mean, I'm totally comfortable with March. It engages a lot of voters. The presidential primary will bring a lot of people to the polls. So I think that, you know, it's going to be statewide election. Everyone's going to know about it. So I think that that is, that is good. And just by way of explanation, there'll be a ballot with the Republican presidential candidates and this ballot proposal. There'll be a ballot with the Democratic presidential candidates and this proposal. And then there'll be a ballot with just this proposal only for any voter who does not want to declare and ask for a particular presidential primary ballot, but just wants to vote in this millage. And our only cost would be the printing of that third proposal-only ballot, which is minimal. Probably not even $1,000. So it's very low cost. The state will reimburse us for all of the other costs associated with the March election. So it's really less than $1,000 and we get the most voter turnout and we can levy it in July. So I'm in favor of that.
I like it.
So I was looking for some assistance with the message because it has multiple parts. There is the part about explaining, we are at a cap. And so we can't do ongoing road maintenance because we are at our cap. But the Public Act 345 can go outside of that cap. That's why we're adjusting Public Act 345. And if you vote for pensions, you're going to get roads. And so I was looking for somebody to figure out how to put all those components together into a message that is, makes sense. Because unless you are really familiar with finances and headly and charter caps and public safety pensions, then I think it could just get, I was concerned it was going to get messy.
Could we use the Michigan Municipal League to identify what communities have successfully passed Public Act 345? Could we then ask them for what their ballot language was and who helped them in the process?
Yes, but we have not seen a community that said, vote for Public Act 345s and we'll fix your roads. All the Act 345 millages are just flat-out asks for money to pay for pensions. This is, like I said.
I think an infographic would really help. Words help, but infographic really help people. And this is where I see, I mean, you have to go to a professional for this, but I think a lot of people respond well to that because they can see visually.
And we're treating it like a mortgage. People don't initially pay 100% on something or a high percentage. In this instance, what we are doing is stretching out, as people do when they buy a home, the payments to a longer period of time for our pension.
I really want to get away from, this is a pension solution. This is a road solution.
This is a road solution.
That we are using pension as a vehicle.
Where is that communication coming from?
But I want to be clear, I mean, it is a pension solution too, though. It is a pension solution.
I want to try to address this question that you just raised. Let's pretend just for a moment that the only thing we're doing is the 345. Leave the roads out of the picture entirely. How would you sell that? I assume it would be, this is good for the community because it gives a higher level of assurance to our retirees about the funding for their pensions. And it smooths out our demands on our general budget by having this source of funds, separate source of funds. So that's what, in a community that did only that, that's the sort of educational campaign you would have. And then you proceed from there to say, well, now we freed up these funds. And we have, you know, we're trying to take a big, the big picture. The big picture is that we have these two difficult, challenging needs for revenue, the pensions and the roads. And we are proposing to do this together because we're looking at the big picture. And I think that would be a way to educate people.
Maybe I'm overthinking it.
Yeah, I was going to say that I think that this millage passes based solely on the fact that it's a public safety pension millage. I really do believe that. I think the people in this community think very highly of our public safety department. I think people in this community recognize that we have a contractual obligation with our current employees and our pensioners to provide them what we promised to provide them. I think people in this community have a great deal of respect for that. And so I think they're going to do that. I, it's, I get what you're saying when you say this is a road solution, but if we wanted a road solution, we could just levy a road millage and be like, here.
But you can.
Well, we could do bonds and do it through that way, you know, through issuing debt, you know, up to our debt ceiling. This is a creative way to do that, but it does fix the pension issue. I mean, it gives us a millage that's not subject to rollback, that we can use, that adjusts to the ARC payment. I mean, it is a pension solution. And I think the added bonuses, hey, we're fixing the roads too. So, but I think if we, if we didn't say a word to the public about the money going to roads and the money going to fix the OPEB retiree healthcare problem, it still passes. I really do. I mean, do I think we should educate and talk about all the other bonuses? Yes, absolutely. But I think the people in this community would vote for this millage if we didn't say a word about what was going to happen if they voted for it. I really do.
Yeah, let me ask a question. When the police officer who was here spoke at the end of our last meeting, he said, well, you know, I understand this may be unconventional or unorthodox, some word to that effect, but we're willing to take the risk. And I really didn't understand the comment. Because I think that the retirees are better off with this than without it. Because it's not subject to the potential fluctuations in the general budget. Am I?
You're right, yeah.
So, you know, it was late, we were all tired. I didn't jump up and say, you know, why are you worried about this? This is better, you're better off this way. And that's what I was getting at earlier about trying to sell this as a standalone.
Right.
Proposition as part of the educational effort.
I assume that the risk would be a public pushback because the officers were asking for their own separate millage. But I agree with you, this is a more secure way for them of funding the pensions.
I just wanted to let Commissioner Jenks know that during the course of our research, we did, there are some 45 cities in Michigan that have passed this, including Oak Park and Berkeley. So it's near and dear.
For sure.
Thank you.
And didn't Pleasant Ridge just do something very recent and pass it?
Not that I'm aware of.
I think they did. I think they did.
I know Pleasant Ridge, and I'm sorry, Bluefield Township.
Yeah.
Were unsuccessful.
I'm, yeah, well, that, they had their own set of issues, for sure. But the Pleasant Ridge, I think, just did this.
I know Oak Park just did.
Yeah, and but Pleasant Ridge's millage rate was pretty low.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And we're back to the consultant or no consultant?
You're going to write a new RFP, asking for a consultant to help with education and marketing?
Sure. Not, not the message, but just, we will decide the message.
The message.
No, the message.
The message based on the ballot language that we have approved.
So develop a message and then.
Well, we want to steer the story. We want to tell, we want to tell the story, but they can help us.
Keywords.
Craft that story.
I mean, if you've got 45 communities, they, none of them did it blindly. So, I mean, there are keywords, there's keywords in how they wrote it up, there are keywords in how they circulated, there are timeframes and stuff like that. Someone can do the research to find out what was done there. They give it to us, it still becomes our responsibility or liability, any way you want to look at it.
I'm okay doing an RFP, but only because I want to see the cost and I'll reserve final decision until the cost comes back to decide whether or not I think it's necessary to do. But I don't have a problem with you soliciting prices and then see what it comes back as and then we can discuss that.
So I, what I have is assist the city to develop the message and then assist with education initiatives.
That's right. Focus groups specifically, so in-person meetings with folks to discuss the issue and see, get feedback, you know, from residents that we can build on then for future messaging. I mean, if we're, if they get a group of people together and they have questions that we didn't think of, we want to know that as we then develop a piece we may mail out or something like that.
Right, so maybe some test messaging.
Right.
Work with focus groups.
Yes.
Refine it.
Yep.
Educate.
Yes.
Okay.
Can you also check with the Michigan Municipal League to see if they have any templates or files or background on that? Because they do compile that on a regular basis. They do compile that on a regular basis. This has been around since 1937. It predates John Engle.
Sure. You know, who would you call it the league for then?
I call the general number. They've got someone that basically maintains files. They don't per se have a library, but they would refer you. I don't know if it goes to Chris Johnson or what.
Okay.
You know, and you may touch, want to touch base with Chris, because that's a freebie.
All right, well, you just determined next steps?
How about that?
You did. There probably are additional parts to the message about some of the other recommendations from the Long Range Public Planning Committee, with, you know, Parks and Rec and library and whatnot, so we have to talk about those, what we're gonna do about those, and if we're gonna message any of those with this, or if that just gets to be way too confusing.
I think you mixed the message.
So we agreed to revenue bonds, right, for the balance of the sewer repair? So, I mean, I think there needs to be messaging on that to let folks know this is what's coming.
I think, yeah, the education campaign should include both.
Right, or next door is gonna be fun, you know?
Well, that's a-
When the water bills go out.
That's a water bill.
Yeah, just saying, so-
Yes, that definitely has to be part of the message.
Right, we need to get ahead of that. We need to get ahead of that. So, I think the messaging on, we're fixing the sewers, here's how we're doing it, here's what to expect, great. But to the mayor's point, you know, we talked about some other things like the library and Parks and Rec that I don't, I know we talked about a consultant to do a complete fee analysis and rate analysis for everything, great. So we don't have a decision on that yet. And I know-
Personally, I think it should be part of the message that we are looking at this.
Yes.
We have hired this consultant-
Yes.
Look at rates-
Right.
Make comparisons, and that we as a city are looking at this while we're going forward with these other changes.
Right.
Yes.
We don't need to get into the weeds on that with this message, because it does get to be too much, but-
And then, did you hear back from the MML?
No, and I still need to follow up with, they gave me the East Lansing Library, and I just-
Go for it. It's not, you know-
It's right, right here on my desk.
Just something that, if they were able to do it-
Yeah.
Curious how.
Yeah, me too.
And if it was legit. And if not, then we'll engage Senator Moss or Representative Wittenberg and go that route.
Yeah, MML was really, really reluctant to try to change the legislation, but wouldn't, couldn't articulate why. They just said there'll be pushback from the library association.
Why? You make it from shall to may, and it's like one word. Right. Okay.
Well, it still has to go through their committees.
Yeah.
And they have to get support through their committees more.
We're not taking anything away, if they change the law that we're asking.
All right, that's all I had. Anybody else have any, anything else you want on that? Ed?
Anything else?
No, I'm good, thanks.
I'll go from the committee members.
Just a question, are you at all considering a recommendation about the pool, or is that gonna go to the recreation advisory board first? We had suggested to increase the revenue, maybe open it up to Berkeley School District, and I'm just curious if there was any discussion at all between the commissioners and the-
That was part of, we wanted rates from private pools, as well as other public pools around us, so that we could make, start making that comparison. That was part of that ask.
I know we spent a lot of time on that.
We just, and we, just last night, we approved a marginal rate increase to some of the rec programs that was recommended by the rec advisory board, so we already did, it was like 5%.
Fruit camp.
Fruit camps and-
We did the 2019-
We did, we did some of those fees.
And it's actually been implemented.
Yeah, the balance of them, we're gonna get from the study, and that will include the pool. And if the rates don't come in where we need to, then your ideas about opening it up and doing all that are all on the table. So, yeah, I think, we talked with Amy at last night's meeting about getting the RFP together, and it's probably like December, I think we talked about last night, would be when they would be engaged. But then December, they start their study, January, February, it's like, you know, maybe March, April of next year before we have. Yeah.
And it's really comprehensive. It's all city departments, not just rec.
Right, that's right, yeah.
Which adds to the time.
Sure.
All right.
And nobody else wanted to consider fireworks, so.
No.
No, you wouldn't have had fireworks if you considered fireworks.
All right, well, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, meeting adjourned. Thanks again.